All right, since 5:30 PM, the board, I know, sorry. Better. Since 5:30 PM, the board has been in closed session to consider the following: The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district; litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal; and student disciplinary cases. I will entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second are heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. We are in open session. Good evening and welcome to the May 6th organizational board meeting. Our mission is to educate students to be self-directed learners, collaborative workers, complex thinkers, quality producers, and community contributors. Please call the roll, Mrs. Patton.
Board members present this evening, Kristen Fitzgerald, Donna Wankey, Paul Leong, Terry Fielden, Christine Gerke, Janet Yang-Ror, and Charles Kush, and student ambassadors present, Seamus McGinnis.
All right, at this point, we have reached the point of our agenda for public comment. I do not have any comment slips. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the board? Okay. Then we will go on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion. Pardon me? Oh, gosh. You know, we don't have, we didn't have the roll call or anything in there. Okay. You know. Want to do the pledge? Okay. All right, we'll continue, we'll continue with the consent agenda. Okay. We'll, we'll do the pledge at the beginning of the new meeting. Okay. All right. So, at this point, I will entertain a consent agenda, a motion for the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second are heard. All the, oh, please call the roll, Mrs. Patton.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Fielden?
Yes.
Gerke?
Yes.
Kush?
Aye.
Leong?
No.
Yang-Ror?
Aye.
Wankey?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. All right, at this point, should we just, do you want to do the pledge first, or no? Okay, let's go ahead and do the pledge. All right? Please join the board in the, in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This is a special meeting because we are honoring one of our outgoing board members, Terry Fielden. And so, at this point in our agenda, we just want to take a second to thank you for your service. I was compiling a list of all the qualities that I know that we're going to miss so much, and in no particular order, we're definitely going to miss your humor, your vast experience as a board member, your long service to District 203, your wise counsel, freely given in every area, your thoroughness, your attention to detail, the ideas and thoughts and expertise you have contributed to make our buildings more functional and beautiful, so that our students can learn in them. But really, we're most importantly going to miss you because you're you. You will be greatly missed. Any other board members want to address our outgoing colleague? Donna.
So Terry, thank you for sitting beside us and guiding us over the last six years. Kristen and I started six years ago, and it has been a journey that I can't imagine having done without you. So, I appreciate that. Not only those six years, but you and I have served in other capacities well beyond that, well before that. And so, it's, yeah, we have to figure out what we're going to serve next to each other and now, because going forward. But your guidance when I was considering running for school board was amazing, and so I appreciate that. And you have been a model board member through good times and laughter, and more importantly, through difficult times, because I think that's when character really shows, is when we do have something difficult that we're working through. The amount of character and model board member that you, that you've been through everything just speaks worlds to how, how we all should be as a board member. So, I appreciate that tremendously, your guidance, your, yeah, just the way that you've handled every situation that's come across your desk. So, thank you for that, and thank you for your working alongside and guiding in a long way. Thank you.
Christine?
So, as I, as I was thinking about what I wanted to say tonight, well, it, it became a little humorous over the weekend as I realized I was losing my voice. And then, the other part that made me giggle was that I had begun obsessing about what to say, because you made me the most nervous of all board members when I first started. And so, I thought, okay, so I'm going from this person who made me incredibly nervous to this person I'm going to miss the most, no offense to anybody else here. And so, and I, and I remember early on, like, if you'd call or send a note, like, hey, if you have a few minutes, call, you know, I wanted to talk to you about something. My first two questions, or first two reactions were, what did I do wrong? Or, I'm in trouble. And it never turned out that way. But, you know, like, sitting through, you know, meetings together, going through phone calls together, sitting at dinners, you know, when we're out as a board with other people serving, conferences, wherever, wherever our boardwork took us, I realized that after all of those exchanges, I was actually a little bit more confident. I also learned that nobody in the education world can pronounce your last name. But, but I came away a little bit more confident in, in terms of what you and I would talk about, and, and how you freely gave of any of the knowledge that you have. And so, I appreciate that you're interested in our success as individuals, which then makes us a successful board. And then, our community and school district are definitely a success because of that. So, we're going to do okay without you. We're going to meet our challenges, and, and we'll keep going and making it even better. And I think that's because we got to serve with you. Thanks.
When I first considered running for the board, Terry was the board president, and he's been an outstanding mentor for me. So, if I get off track, I'm going to blame you whether you're present or not. Thank you so much.
Terry, you've been a wonderful board colleague, mentor, and, and friend. There are so many things that I've learned from you, but I think one of the ones that really always strikes me the most, when I think about kind of all the wisdom that you've imparted, is, you know, for, for me, when I think about this board, we're taking basically seven random people and throwing them together, and the fact that we can function is, you know, in, in some ways, kind of amazing, right? That, that these seven random people can, can get together and make decisions. And I think, in no small part, that is largely because by, by your words and by, by your example, you know, one of the things that I hear from you over and over again is that as a board, as individuals, we can disagree. We can, you know, we, and we do, and we all have our own opinions, and, and, you know, that's reflected in how we vote and how, you know, we, we speak and talk to each other. But in the end, you know, one of the things that I think you've continually shown by example is, is we can disagree, but then we come together and, and act as, as one board. And, you know, we give, I, I think through that, like, a great and strong example to, to our students, and, and really, it helps, I think, to, in, in our mission to put students first. And, and I want to thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Terry. Charles?
Okay. I'm going to ask my fellow colleagues and Terry to indulge me, but I couldn't let this opportunity go by, given one of the first conversations that we had, right when I was becoming on, coming onto the board. So, folks know what I mean. Okay. All right. All right, hang on. Hang on, let me find the right one here. Yes, please throw it there. Please throw it there. All right. Oh, yeah. All right.
I have one more. They want you to...
Yes, please.
I'll save you here.
Oh, there you go. I got it.
I was just going to say, what would Terry do is something that we'll have to have a little time.
Yes.
Yes, we'll have to...
What would you do?
Okay. And here we go. Well, Terry, you made it. Your last official school board meeting. I thought this would serve as the appropriate soundtrack for my remarks, given your 12 years of service. It's been a long journey, and I'm sure I speak for all of us, or at least to some degree, when I say that we will all be missing you. Of course, that will mostly be because you will be, well, missing. In all seriousness, your departure does leave a tremendous void to fill, given the many contributions you made to this community through your service on this board. Each of us who has the, had had the honor to serve with you carries with us a piece of the wisdom, passion, and energy that you leave with us. And collectively, along with our new colleague, we will strive to continue the standard of excellence that you helped to shape during your time here. I wanted to personally thank you for your mentorship and all the support you provided to me from my very first day. I will greatly miss your dry sense of humor, your quick wit, and your willingness to cut straight to the heart of a matter while speaking from the heart in addressing what matters. Most of all, I missed the professionalism and the integrity with which you carried yourself as a member of this board. It wasn't always easy, but despite the obstacles that arose from time to time, you always managed to rise above the fray, to stand up for what you felt was right, despite the personal cost. Now, as you graduate from the board and move on to your next chapter of your life, I wish you all the best and hope that whatever you choose to do in your newly found free time brings as much enrichment to your life as you have helped to bring to the 6,747 kids that graduated during your tenure on the board. Thank you.
Terry, I just want to say thanks. Seven years ago, you and six of your friends at that time took a chance on some kid, and I appreciate that. Eight years later, I'm still sitting here, so, thank you. I appreciate the faith in that. I know you, you fought hard for me, I appreciate that. I've appreciated your guidance, your mentorship, and co-leading with you. You've, one, the thing I've always most appreciated about you is, I always know where Terry's at, whether that's with me or needing me to think differently. I've always known where you're at, and I think that's an admirable trait, so I appreciate that very much. To my cabinet, what I want to say is, now you actually have to respond to his emails, because as a member of our community, he is somebody that we value, and we want to make sure that we are responsive to his needs. Whereas, as a board member, the sarcasm and occasional comments, we could just shrug our shoulders and say, eh, that's Terry. I also want more, as importantly, thanking Terry. I want to thank the Fielden family for allowing Terry to give so much of his time, and time away from you to be able to help do what he's done for us. It means the world to all of us that you were able to allow him and share his time with us. So, thank you to each of you. Terry, we know it's not goodbye for real, it's just moving on to a new chapter, so, good, congratulations and good luck to you.
We also have a few things for you.
So, the members of our audience who are here, I know Ms. Fitzgerald doesn't have a microphone with her there. The plaque that Mr. Fielden is receiving from the Board of Education, thanks him for his service, but also identifies all of the board members who served with Terry during his term. So, I think that's, that's a long list there, Terry.
So, you're irreplaceable, but we will be really thinking of you as your family. Do you want to come up?
For a picture. They're like, what? It's okay, we've been, you know, Katie, Terry.
You have shared, Terry. Thank you. No, you know that... Yeah. For your family, and that you came up for a little celebration, celebrating the new chapter. Come on up here. Maybe you can...
We're missing one daughter who's at college right now.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, thanks. Thank you. He's not quite out yet, we have to adjourn.
I know.
Okay. Okay.
So, if you'd, if you'd told me, like, in 2007, if I'd be, still be here in 12 years, I probably would have said no. In, in fact, when I ran one of the columns at, at the time, which I won't, I won't say the paper, but the last line of the, of the endorsement for the, I wasn't one of the endorsements, and it says, that's like, and by the way, yeah, Terry Fielden's running too, so. But I did get the endorsement from Naperville Sun, which allowed me to win. I really touched by a lot of things everybody had to say. But I'll, I'll tell you this, you guys stand in my mind as the best board I've ever served with during the six boards that I had. This is the most mature board that I've encountered, and the most thoughtful. Everybody here is student-focused, and it's repeated time and time again, are we doing what's in the best interest of students, and not for those, only those at the top of the spectrum, but those at the bottom. And this board has a great heart for those who struggle with, with academic achievement. And Dan has brought, Dan has brought the resources to help those people out at the behest of the board. To Dan's credit, he's responded, and he listens. I think, there's a couple of things. You talked about some of the struggles and so forth, and what you have to keep in mind when you serve is that your children watch you, and my children are here tonight, and they watched me go through a very difficult time. But what I wanted them to observe and see is that you don't cave just because somebody is picking on you. You really have to stand firm and hold your ground and go forward when you know you're right, but you don't do it belligerently. We don't have enough of that in this country now. We tend to throw punches where we should acquiesce and, and find more common ground, but we've gotten away from that. But that's not how my grandfather raised me, and he's the guy who would give credit for that. My kids, Katie is a special ed teacher, graduated from ISU. Michelle, who's at school, she's in culinary, but she benefited at Naperville Central from the culinary arts wing that we installed under the referendum. And without that wing, she wouldn't have the opportunity to do what she's going to do. And Terrence, Terrence Jr., he wants to, he'll graduate this year. I entered, I entered the board when he graduated kindergarten, so he's gone this whole, whole entire school life with his dad on the board and all the good, fun stuff that goes along with that, so, which I'm sure was enjoyable. Mostly sitting at Central and with his friends, is that your dad's name on the plaque? So, but he's going to, he wants to be a pharmacologist. But I think the greatest sacrifice was made by my wife Nancy, 26 years of marriage. She held firm with me throughout all 12 years and encouraged me to stay strong in my times of trial. There was no one else in the world who has ever offered so much support and sacrifice. And that's where I'm going to close. I'll miss all of you. I won't miss the meetings, but I'll miss you personally. And Dan, I do thank you for your leadership. You've done a great job. I'm going to continue. And Bob, you were the first administrator I met. I don't know if you met at, at Washington when you were principal, the first person, so, but thank you all. And I look forward to, to leaving.
Okay, well, on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Sign, he die.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second are heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. All right, I'd like to invite those in the audience back for a reception to honor Terry and to welcome our new board members. We will reconvene at about 7:45.
I like to text Mr. Cleveland.
Relax. It's interesting.
... Relax. It's interesting.
... Relax. 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 Relax.[1418.33]
Okay, everyone, I'd like to welcome you back to the May 6th meeting and our new organizational board meeting. Our mission is to educate students to be self-directed learners, collaborative workers, complex thinkers, quality producers, and community contributors. Please call the roll Mrs. Patton.
Board members present this evening, Joe Kuzminski, Janet Yang-Ror, Paul Leong, Kristen Fitzgerald, Donna Wonke, Christine Gerke, Charles Kush, and student ambassadors, Seamus McGinnis.
Hey. At this point, we will go to item 8.01, which is to review our election results for information only. So you can see in board docs, the information showing the results from the April 2nd election. Any questions? Okay. Now we will move to item 9.01, the seating of re-elected and newly-elected Board of Education members. Okay?
So what will happen now, it will actually go into 10.01. The election results having been canvassed and the newly-selected board members identified, we'll administer the oath of office for each of the board members. You have a copy of the oath in front of you. Ask you to stand, raise your right hand, and together, recite the oath.
You recite it together. You just say your name.
I.
I. Janet Yang-Ror, do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office as a member of the Board of Education of Mayville Community School District 203 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability. I further affirm that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to speak changes to decisions of ethical and constructive.
So, welcome to the District 203 Board, Joe Kuzminski, and also welcome back Gianna and Christine. Joe, would you like to introduce your guests?
Sure. I have my wife Kate Roland and my three kids, Julia, John, and A., who even missed part of soccer practice tonight to be here.
And Janet?
Today I have my husband, Dan Ror, my three kids, Katherine, Johnny, and Miriam, my parents Shay and Lee, and my mother-in-law, Gail, all very proud District 203 residents.
Okay, right, okay. All right, so if you would like to come up and have pictures with the board members, don't we do that for the swing in? Yep. So if you would like to invite your family to come forward and have a picture with you? Okay. And item 11 is our roll call, but we did do the roll call before. Okay. Nomination does not require a second voice vote taken.
I would like to nominate Kristen Fitzgerald for president.
Okay. A motion is second or heard. Voice vote. So we just, all in favor?
No. The requirement is that there, you indicate your vote, so she'll have to do a roll call vote.
All right. Please call the roll.
Are there any other nominations?
I want to nominate Donna Wonke to serve as Vice President of the Board.
Okay. So we'll do that, we'll do the vote first, and then we'll do that second nomination. Yep. But are there any other nominations for president? Okay. So, hearing none, we will have a vote. Please call the roll, Mrs. Patton.
Kozminski?
Yes.
Leong?
Aye.
Wonke?
Yes.
Gurkey?
Aye.
Yang-Ror?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Kush?
Aye.
Gurkey?
Aye.
Yang-Ror?
Aye.
Wonke?
Yes.
Gurkey?
Aye.
Yang-Ror?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Kush?
Aye.
Hey, the motion passes.
Thank you. I'm excited to be, continue serving all of you as board presidents. Okay, we will go then to item...
13.
13.01, election of Vice President. I will entertain a motion for the Vice President.
I would like to nominate Donna Wonke to serve as Vice President of the Board.
I second that.
A motion is second or heard. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Please call the roll.
Leong?
Aye.
Kozminski?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Kush?
Aye.
Gurkey?
Aye.
Yang-Ror?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Kush?
Aye.
Gurkey?
Aye.
Yang-Ror?
Aye.
Gurkey?
Hey, the motion passes. Right now, we will go to item 15.03, Consolidated District Plan.
So item 15.03, the Consolidated District Plan is not an annual, but a semi-regular process that the district has to go through in order to meet its obligations regarding federal funding in a requirement by the Illinois State Board of Education. Last one was done in 2017. Process has also changed a little bit, so that's raised some questions. So Jane Willard will make some comments in regard to the consolidated district plan. After her comments, Jane, Dr. Hester, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board has. We would be requesting action this evening, but if there's enough questions, we can bring it back for further conversation at the May 21st meeting. Jane?
This year, the Illinois State Board of Education has required districts to file one consolidated plan for FY 2020 for all federal grants. We bring the grant plans for Board of Ed approval following ISB's direction, which has changed over the past few years. Like Dan said, the last time you approved just Title I was in 2017. In the past, each grant administrator prepared individual grant plans aligned to the parameters of each grant, district goals, and student needs, and submitted this to the state. The new consolidated plan process allows districts to answer one set of planning questions to meet requirements for all federal formula grants awarded to each district rather than individual plans for each grant. This will help streamline the federal grant application and management process with the intended outcome to provide holistic supports and services to students. The following grants are included in the Consolidated District Plan, Title I, II, III, IV, and IDEA. Each grant administrator collaborated with district staff, building leadership on the specifics of the plan, following the allowable parameters in each grant that's outlined by the state. Each grant administrator gathered input during the 1819 school year to help inform this plan. Input was gathered from parents and community members and was gathered in multiple ways. It was gathered at the building and district level through individual conversations with parents of students receiving the services, home and school meetings, committee meetings, and individual surveys. Building administrators will continue to meet with parents and staff as we make adjustments to this, and the feedback will be used for the amendments that are needed. The plan specifics, they're detailed, but we also write this to allow flexibility so that we can appropriately respond and adjust based on our student needs. We are seeking approval in May so that we are ready to complete the applications when they become available later this month. We have not had those applications yet. Once the applications are open, we will submit those for state approval, and our final grant applications are due June 30th. I'll answer any questions.
I know there were several questions about the 90% threshold. Could you review the background with regard to the 90% threshold?
Sure. That 90% threshold came from ISB. We had conversations, Dr. Knowlton actually just made, confirmed that, that that is what is ISB put forward for us, and we're kind of rolling up to that.
Paul?
Are there any consequences for not meeting that requirement, or any rewards for exceeding it?
At this point, there are not. We do take aspects of that as we think about our designation, but right now, we don't know of any penalties if we do not meet that benchmark.
Other questions from the board? Can you talk a little bit more about some of the family engagement that you've done with Title I families? I know that there's some degree of a budget during the previous year, the $8,600, but what kinds of things were we able to actually communicate with those families and send home to assist those families in terms of engaging parents?
I'm going to actually turn that over to Dr. Hester, since she's been working with our principals one-on-one this year.
So, we have been required through Title I to do parent involvement engagement, given the beginning of time with that grant. So, each school is actually required to write a school involvement plan, and then from that school involvement plan, we write a district involvement plan. And in that process, they solicit feedback, usually with home and school, on grant programs. They ask for feedback, then they bring that to us for potential revisions in the future. But in terms of some of the engagements, so some examples, at BB Elementary, there is a very robust family engagement plan that started with dual-language families, but then also with some of the, you know, English-first families as well. And in that plan, it started with one event, so an event to educate the families, and it has moved into, with this school year, with new research that's been done on parent engagement, where it's happening about once a quarter, but they actually have plans of expanding that if grant funding allows in the future. The grant actually calls for parent education. So engagement to Title I is parent education, and in that parent education also comes materials for parents to use with their students, and materials for parents to use themselves that would help their students. So it's really parent education as much or more than what we might think of as engagement.
Thank you. Any other additional questions? Does the board feel comfortable moving forward then with approval? Right. I'll take a motion then, for item 15.03.
I move approval of item 15.03, Consolidated District Plan, as presented.
A motion is second or heard. Please call the roll, Mrs. Patton.
Gurkey?
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Kozminski?
Aye.
Kush?
Aye.
Yang-Ror?
Aye.
Wonke?
Yes.
Leong?
Aye.
The motion passes. All right. At this point, we are on item 16.01, Student Ambassador Reports, and Seamus, we'd love to have your report.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. It's been a very exciting 2018-2019 school year, but as always, all good things must come to an end. So, before we do though, Central has a bunch of important events coming up in these final weeks. Theater Central's one-axe production will be Thursday, May 9th, Friday, May 10th, and Saturday, May 11th, all at 7:00 PM in our auditorium. Next week, we'll see the year-end concerts for each of our music programs, with the choral performance on Monday, the 13th, band on Tuesday, the 14th, and orchestra on Wednesday, the 15th, as usual, at 7:00 PM in our auditorium. And lastly, for the class of 2019, the commemorative event will be Friday, May 17th, and our graduation ceremony will be the evening of May 20th. And it's a little strange to think that in just two weeks' time, right now, I'll be sitting about 100 yards that way, ending my role as a student in this district. So while I have the chance, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for all the hard work and dedication and time and energy that you put into helping students every single day. A government bureaucracy that functions effectively, and not only that, but makes a positive impact on people's lives, is pretty rare today. But in my time working here with the board, it's extremely clear that this district represents a hopeful exception and a shining example of what bringing good into this world can look like. Each of you play a distinct role in making this district as prestigious and impactful as it is, and I'm grateful for all that you all do to make our education better. I hope you all know what a huge ripple effect you create as you change the lives of students that hope to one day do the same for others. And it's been an honor to be here across the past year, and I look forward to what the future holds for District 203. Thank you.
That was a wonderful report, and we would like to thank you also for your service. We have a thank you card and a gift card from the board. Would you like a picture with the board?
Right next to his alarm clock.
So again, we thank you so much for your service, and I wondered if you'd want to tell us where you're heading?
Absolutely. I'm going to Belmont University in Nashville, and I'll be majoring in psychology and music business.
Okay. We wish you the very best. Thank you for your dedication. Okay, moving on to item 16.02, Superintendent Staff School Reports.
Every month, the Board of Education invites one of its principals to come before the board to present an update on its school improvement work at that school. Prairie Principal Brian Zalis was lucky enough to draw the May organizational meeting and give his presentation now. So I would like to invite Brian up, and a huge thank you to Brian. And a rather large contingent of the overall Prairie community, with the families of our board members who are here also, but then also those who came to support Mr. Zalis. So thank you for your patience and waiting. I know this presentation is worth the wait, so Mr. Zalis, we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Zalis, and I'm the proud principal of Prairie Elementary School. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening to highlight Prairie's school improvement plan and accomplishments. Prairie is a true learning community comprised of wonderful students, a strong parent community, and an outstanding staff. We believe in the power of collective efficacy, partnering as a community of parents, teachers, and staff to meet the needs of our students. We are a team with a focus on continuous improvement and growth for all of our stakeholders. I would like to acknowledge and thank the members of Prairie's leadership team for their hard work and dedication to the school improvement process. Our team is comprised of administration, building specialists, and classroom teachers. We meet monthly to review school-wide data, plan professional development, and to monitor our school improvement process. I would like to acknowledge two members of that leadership team that are here with me tonight, Lisa Dalton, our learning support coach, and Joanna Lepurna, who is one of our kindergarten teachers, and I would be remiss not to recognize Leslie Foose, our home and school president, who has been a great support to me in my first year as principal at Prairie. At Prairie, we believe in the idea of shared leadership. All staff support our school improvement efforts through their collaboration on specific teams like our leadership team. In addition, there are other teams hard at work supporting our students' growth and achievement as well as the school improvement process. These teams include our math instructional leadership team, our instructional support team, which is comprised of our building specialists, and our professional learning communities. These teams engage in a continuous review of data to plan and monitor efforts to support our growth as a community of learners. At the start of the school year, our leadership teams digs into the preliminary data provided by the state. Our team analyzes the data for strengths as well as opportunities for growth. In reviewing the 2018 PARC data in the area of English Language Arts, 77% of students tested, met, or exceeded expectations, scoring above the district average. We are proud of the increased achievement that we have seen in the area of English Language Arts and look forward to our continued growth in this area. While 2018 PARC math data shows a slight increase in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations, and though we still performed higher than the district average, it has been at a slower rate than the area of English Language Arts. While we are proud to see the increase in achievement, we recognize this is an area of growth for us. As a result, this has become a key focus area for the Prairie staff during the 2018-19 school year, as we strive to support our students' growth and achievement in the area of mathematics. After reviewing preliminary data, school improvement goals are crafted. Prairie's school improvement goals are focused in the area of English Language Arts, mathematics, and social-emotional learning. To support these goals, we have been implementing action steps that are focused on supporting student achievement and growth, the professional learning of all staff, and supporting our students' SEL needs. We are continuously analyzing our data to adjust our action plan so that we continue to see student growth and achievement. In the next few slides, I will highlight our journey with regards to the work that has been done to engage staff in professional development, to support student learning, and to address social-emotional learning. First and foremost, the reason we are here is to help our students reach their potential. Our team analyzes the data for strengths, as well as opportunities for growth. In reviewing the 2018 PARC data in the area of English Language Arts, 77% of students tested, met, or exceeded expectations, scoring above the district average. We are proud of the increased achievement that we have seen in the area of English Language Arts and look forward to our continued growth in this area. While 2018 PARC math data shows a slight increase in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations, and though we still performed higher than the district average, it has been at a slower rate than the area of English Language Arts. While we are proud to see the increase in achievement, we recognize this is an area of growth for us. As a result, this has become a key focus area for the Prairie staff during the 2018-20 school year, as we strive to support our students' growth and achievement in the area of mathematics. After reviewing preliminary data, school improvement goals are crafted. Prairie's school improvement goals are focused in the area of English Language Arts, mathematics, and social-emotional learning. To support these goals, we have been implementing action steps that are focused on supporting student achievement and growth, the professional learning of all staff, and supporting our students' SEL needs. We are continuously analyzing our data to adjust our action plan so that we continue to see student growth and achievement. In the next few slides, I will highlight our journey with regards to the work that has been done to engage staff in professional development, to support student learning, and to address social-emotional learning. First and foremost, the reason we are here is to help our students reach their potential. Over the last two years, we have looked at current practices and structures in an effort to maximize students' access to core curriculum and supports. Staff have been developing an understanding of the different co-teaching models with the goal of getting specialized support staff into the classroom to positively impact student learning and achievement. Teachers involved in co-teaching plan together and deliver instruction to meet the various needs within the classroom. Co-teachers then reflect on student learning and continue the cycle of planning and instruction. Through this model, many specialists have successfully partnered with classroom teachers to meet the diverse learning needs of our students. This has also supported our students with IEPs in generalizing skills in the regular classroom. In addition, this has afforded more opportunities for teachers to work with small groups to both remediate and to extend learning. Through our professional learning related to multi-tiered systems of support, building staff are enhancing their skills in how to best support students' academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs. MTSS benefits students by ensuring that all students have the access to the supports they need to be successful. To ensure that we have a complete picture of each student's strengths and opportunities, and as a part of our MTSS work, we have started to identify essential standards. Through this process, grade-level teams have dug into the core curriculum, identifying those skills that are key to our students' success as they navigate their learning. In addition, staff have created assessment measures to plan for individual student needs. We are seeing positive benefits, and our work in these areas will continue during the 2019-2020 school year. Each day on the announcements, I end by encouraging our students and staff to never stop learning. We continue to strive to improve our practice and find new and innovative ways to engage our students and support their academic and social-emotional growth. Best practice instruction applies to every learning environment within our school. We have engaged staff in professional development centered on effective teaching using the research of Robert Marzano and John Hattie. For example, the use of clear, student-friendly learning targets are common practice in all of our classrooms. We have also used our data to provide specific and focused professional learning in the area of math, literacy, and social-emotional learning. To build our capacity as a staff, we have engaged in several book studies over the past two years in these targeted areas. In addition, we devote time during our building-based professional development staff meetings to model and engage staff in dialogue related to the implementation of these best practice strategies. With staff new to Prairie this year, we built opportunities to bring them up to speed on the professional development work that was completed during the 1718 school year as well. We also recognize the importance of teachers' learning from one another and the positive impact it has on teaching practices and student learning. When teachers visit one another's classrooms to gather information on teaching practices and student learning, a wealth of shared knowledge is collected. As a result, this year, teachers had the opportunity to engage in peer observations. Eighteen staff members participated in this professional learning with positive feedback. As a result, several staff have expressed an interest in engaging in peer observation during the upcoming school year as well. At Prairie, there is a strong focus placed on students' social-emotional growth and development. As a school, we have put building-wide structures and professional development into place. Time has been devoted to engage staff in collaborative conversations related to the implementation of the SEL curriculum, including ways to integrate it into multiple content areas, and how to measure our students' understanding, growth, and application of the SEL core competencies. Prairie also has building-wide behavior expectations that are outlined in our Prairie Pride acronym. This year, in an effort to support our students in getting back into a learning mindset over the weekend, we engage in a whole-school mindful Monday exercise during the morning announcements. And lastly, with the support of our home and school, we have been able to host multiple assemblies with an SEL focus. Individual classrooms are also focused on students' SEL growth and development. In addition to the SEL curriculum, Prairie staff have worked with students on developing calming strategies when feeling dysregulated or in need of a quiet space. Strategies include the use of breathing techniques, access to fidgets and other manipulatives, and the use of the sensory room or our movement hallway. Along with that, class meetings are a time for teachers and students to build relationships with one another, address classroom needs, share concerns and celebrations, and to reinforce our SEL curriculum. As our staff and students value this time, next year's schedule includes a dedicated 15 minutes class meeting at the start of each school day. Our parent community has also been provided opportunities to support their students' SEL growth outside of Prairie. Our social worker has led two parent workshops, one focused on strength-based parenting and the other on mindfulness. This year, our SFCP event was Prairie Kids Care. Students created various items to be donated or given to several local organizations, including sun catchers for the residents at Sunrise Assisted Living, plant sticks for the Garden Works Project, dog toys for local pet shelters, and pick-me-up kits for children staying at the Ronald McDonald House, as well as Almost Home Kids. Families were also able to learn about various volunteer opportunities within the community as well. Another strong component of Prairie's SEL practices is finding opportunities for our students to put into practice those SEL core competencies and to live the district's vision by, I'm sorry, live the district's mission by giving back and being true community contributors. As a school, we have made commitments to finding opportunities for our students to give back. This year, Prairie students gave back in a variety of ways. As a school, we raised over $4,000 for the Swifty Foundation, an organization fighting childhood cancer. In addition, second graders made blankets for the Naperville Humane Society, and our third graders headed to feed my starving children. Our first and fifth graders spread some Prairie pride at Sunrise Assisted Living this year as well. Our kindergarten friends have worked hard to spread cheer to staff throughout through uplifting pictures and words of encouragement. And not to be forgotten, our fourth graders did a book drive for an underprivileged school in East Aurora, which impacted over 110 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students. Prairie students and staff truly made a difference this year. This year, Prairie is celebrating its 50th year. As we are prepared to commemorate this milestone, I have had the opportunity to hear from former students, staff, and parents. It is clear that Prairie is a learning community like no other and has a strong tradition of working together to do what is best for students. I am proud to say that this tradition continues on today and is even stronger. I am thankful to be a part of Prairie's rich history and to serve the school as its principal. In closing, I would like to share a short clip with you that highlights why our students, staff, and parents think Prairie is a special place.
Here's to 50 more great years. Thank you again for the opportunity to share a little insight into Prairie with you. I'm happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you for that wonderful report, and welcome to the board. I know this is your first presentation, and we're so glad to have you here. And thank you to all of you in the audience who were able to come as well. Congratulations on those 50 years.
Thank you. Thank you. It's quite a milestone. Tomorrow's our big celebration, so our open house.
All right, questions from the board? Paul.
Thanks for the report. I like the way you present your numbers in terms of the whole school, but I need to ask you, what kind of progress are you making with your achievement gaps?
That's a great question. We actually, this year, we really dug into the data, specifically looking at our IEP students, because that's where we're seeing a significant achievement gap right now. So we've really had our LBS staff, along with our student service coordinator and our learning support coach, really dig into the data and really start looking at specific student groups, specific students, and kind of looking at where those gaps are, are there skill deficits that we could address through curriculum, through interventions, and those types of things. We've also been very purposeful at looking at our schedule and how to do that co-teaching that I talked a little bit about as well, too. So getting our specialists into the classroom to support learning as well, too, has been very, very important. The other thing we're doing is we're looking at how we're utilizing our assistants and the support within the building, so that assistants might move multiple grade levels to go in and support students, as opposed to being assigned to one grade level for the day. So really trying to look at the best people to get in and support students. So we've seen some good progress, and we're excited to move forward with that next year. And we've got some other things planned going forward next year, including kind of how we're dividing up caseloads as well, too, because right now, the way it's structured, our one LBS is with 4th and 5th, and we think it's kind of looking at the structure, having them with a primary grade as well as an intermediate grade. That will open up more opportunities for them to get into the classrooms and support students as well, too. So I think we're on a good path with that right now.
Christine.
Hi.
How are you?
How are you?
Good.
So it's more of a comment than a question, but Prairie's one of my adoptive schools this year, which was a bit of a homecoming, because that's where my kids went. And so I've been to several events at the school, and what I like about the SEL stuff that you highlighted, but even what I witnessed, is that the kids are doing. They're not just, it's not a static type of thing. You're showing them ways that they can be on the community and how they can help others. So I appreciate that all of the grade levels, too, have an opportunity, and especially the event a couple of weeks ago, where there were multiple organizations that they could go and do some work for in the building. So they could pick something that maybe meant a little bit more to them, and they could go, you know, put together a kit, or I can't even remember. I was like so overwhelmed, because it was such a great event. But they could pick something that was meaningful for them. It wasn't just come and do one thing. So I appreciate how you're making that component come alive.
And we appreciate you coming and seeing that. So thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you again to the Prairie folks who stayed with us.
Okay, moving on to item 16.04 President's Report. I just want to mention to the board that I got a reminder from ISB in terms of the delegate assembly and the ISB resolutions process. So if we wish to author any kind of resolution, the submission deadline is Wednesday, June 26th. I just wanted to mention that to everyone. They are reminding all boards of that. And so if we want to think about anything, I have forms for it. So if people have thoughts about that, then we can talk about it at a future board meeting. Okay. Board of Education reports. Donna.
So with our new board, I will be doing assignments for adoptive schools, as Christine mentioned, and the committees. So if you could think about what you would like, if there's any special requests that you have, just a reminder that you can't be assigned to the school that your own children are currently attending, and then you should think about work schedules in regard to committees as well. And I'd be happy to help you to navigate that if you're not sure when committees are meeting. But I'd like to get some feedback from all of you and then develop the assignments. So Christine, you know, I have like a spreadsheet going back from when you first started on the board, as far as to what schools you've been assigned and what committees you've been assigned. So if I don't get any feedback, that's fine, too. I will try to rotate you into the schools and the committees that you haven't yet participated in. However, like I said, it would be helpful to know if you have some conflicts with committees, particularly that meet at certain times. So, yeah, we'll be doing that in June, July, but I just wanted to...
A program that our board has, that not every board has, and it's a huge strength. So thank you for your work on that. And the sooner we get that adopted, the better. I think we've done it in July before. We could certainly do it in June, and that gives people time that they can meet with principals over the summer if they want. All right. Any other Board of Education reports? All right, we will move on to discussion without action, and we'll start with item 17.01 2019-2020 Tentative Budget Presentation.
We'll invite our Chief Financial Officer, Chief School Business Official, Michael Francis, to come to the presentation table to present to the Board of Education the tentative recommended budget for the 1920 school year. Just a reminder for the board, I know Mike will address this in his presentation, this is your first of several opportunities to look at the budget and to prepare questions for administration to respond to. We won't be asking for any action on the budget until the June 17th meeting, assuming that we're able to sufficiently answer your questions by then. As a reminder, by statute, we're obligated to have a budget approved by the end of September. But I think we have a pretty solid budget here. A lot of information Mike's going to present to you. So, you know, I would encourage you, again, over the next couple of weeks, get an understanding of the budget, what's contained within there. We'll come back with the questions. Mike will present to you an overview of it right now, but we'll have this meeting and three more to be able to address questions that you may have before we request action. So Mike?
Thank you, Superintendent Bridges. This evening, we are presenting an overview of our tentative budget for the upcoming 2019-2020 school year. Tonight starts the process for board review. There'll be a series of opportunities for feedback and questions for final approval, which is scheduled for the second meeting in June. Similar to previous years, this budget provides funding for instructional services and program expansions to ensure all students reach their full potential. It also reflects both of the property tax abatements passed by the Board of Education in March, one for the district's debt service tax levy, as well as the additional $2 million aggregate extension abatement. These tax reductions will result in savings to our taxpayers on their upcoming tax bills. Finally, as in our intent to continue to demonstrate diligence to ensure long-term financial stability, and our five-year financial projections will be adjusted to reflect the recommendations in this presentation. The timeline displayed ensures the district adopts its budget in time for the start of the fiscal year, which is well before the statutory deadline of September 30th. I will be reviewing the budget document next week with the Citizen Finance Advisors before bringing it back to the board, a couple of times before final approval scheduled at the June 17th meeting. The budget process takes place year-round. The district begins the planning in the fall by updating enrollment projections and the five-year financial forecast. Once these tasks are complete, administration meets with the Citizen Finance Advisory Committee to discuss the reports and known future plans and priorities, and to get their feedback. We then present the information to the Board of Education for additional input and feedback. Once this part of the process is completed, administration moves forward with the tax levy and the budget planning process. The largest budget item is personnel costs, which make up over 76% of the total expenditures. The administration evaluated all aspects of staffing and recommends changes for the FY '20 budget in accordance with our strategic blueprint, Focus 2020. This slide shows the early childhood through 12th grade and district special education staffing allocation plan that was presented to the Board of Education in March of this year. Additionally, the district continues to modify its educational services based on research and best practices. This table includes new and restructured staffing proposals for fiscal year 2020. The supervisors of special education will support building teams in managing complex legal and advocate cases. They will aid the work of developing positive relationships with families and implementing best practices in providing services to students. These positions are part of a restructuring within the special services department. To offset this increase, the positions of Director of Student Services, Student Services Coordinator, and the halftime ALOP coordinator position have been eliminated, leaving a net increase of .5 FTE. Naperville and Ellsworth currently do not have assistant principals to support the special education evaluations and daily operations of the building. In order to provide leadership to the instructional support team and to general educators on evidence-based service delivery, as well as support the evaluation and daily needs and the daily operations, it is recommended that each building have a 1.0 Student Services Coordinator. Currently, these buildings share an SSC with another building. The digital applications and virtual learning manager will manage all district curricular applications and support the user interface. This position will be a site administrator for all digital textbook applications and provide online and blended support during the school year and throughout the summer. This position will also design and manage curricular sites and repositories and provide timely and direct support to teachers, so troubleshooting is seamless. Currently, there are 56 timesheet assistant positions to support the needs of special education students. In order to be compliant with the NESA contract, we need to make any position that will continue beyond one year into a NESA contract position. By adjusting 20 timesheet positions to NESA positions, we will be able to meet this objective. This change will add benefits to 20 of the 56 current positions. The current Computer Support Associate environment has 17 part-time CSA positions. Of these, seven are currently unfilled positions at elementary locations. The User Support Group, in concert with Human Resources, Curriculum Department, and NESA, has no plans to fill these seven open part-time positions for the upcoming school year. Currently, CSAs from Naperville Central and North have been splitting time between their buildings to cover IT support needs at PSAC. to cover IT support needs at PSAC. The executive support needs of PSAC administrators differ from those of other locations in scope, pace, scale, and urgency. PSAC staff and buildings are best served by a single full-time CSA that can develop and maintain intimate knowledge of process and needs. In addition, the district's professional learning and large group meetings that require technology support are hosted at PSAC on a regular basis. One additional full-time CSA position will still allow the district to realize a net overall vacancy and dollar savings from the seven part-time open CSA positions. The high school student services secretaries are now, that are now serving that role for the assistant principal of student services. To bring these positions in compliance with NESA contract and the other four assistant principal secretaries, they need to be adjusted to their proper position category. Along with these changes, we've also incorporated the reduction to the administrative staff for the 2019-2020 school year. Overall, five administrative positions have been eliminated for next year. We are also presenting five new initiatives for the FY '20 budget year. We have been in discussions with the Naperville Park District about construction of a turf field at Knox Park, cost of which would be shared by both entities. For many years, and especially since the cross was added as an IHSA sport, field space has been very limited. Improved scheduling of competitions and practices will result from the construction of this field. Junior high track, as well as special Olympic ethics, will also benefit from this addition. The Let's Talk platform will create a seamless way for our community stakeholders to communicate with us and receive responses in a quick and efficient manner. We'll also offer safety and bullying reporting, as well as employee engagement and morale services. The district's current website is five years old. It is in need of an update to stay current with website trends and user expectations. Finally, we are looking for opportunities where we can be more culturally responsive to the needs of our diverse student populations. We believe a curriculum review will allow us to identify any gaps. Further training for the school leadership teams will be completed using the Deep Equity Program. There are a couple other notable changes for the upcoming tentative budget. At its April 22nd meeting, the Board of Education approved a bid for the purchase of buses. Based on the size of our bus fleet, on average, we will be replacing approximately 17 buses or 1/8 of them on an annual basis. There are a number of technology leases to be refreshed for the FY '20 budget also. These costs are the annual expected lease payments for each. We are in the process of obtaining lease quotes that we will evaluate to make a recommendation of leasing versus buying at an upcoming board meeting. In summarizing our tentative budget for next year, I'll start by reviewing the district's revenue. Property taxes are estimated to increase 7.8 million or 3.3% over the current budget. The tax rate has decreased again, while the equalized asset value of local property has increased. With the abatements that the board has approved, a homeowner with a $410,000 value home will have a tax bill that is $126 less than if the abatements did not occur. We are continuing to see a rise in interest income and have increased the revenue budget for that area by approximately $1 million. Corporate personal property replacement taxes are expected to remain stable again. State funding overall is estimated to increase just over $500,000 mainly in special education private facility tuition reimbursement, aligning it with our current funding. We are also estimating a small increase from the new funding formula for state aid, evidence-based funding. This new funding includes some categories that were formerly identified as mandated categorical payments and those payments were very rarely made on time. Under the new formula, dispersments are received on a regular basis. Federal revenue is projected slightly down for the upcoming year. This chart graphically displays the projected revenues by major sources. The largest piece is property taxes, which makes up almost 85% of the district's revenue. This table highlights total revenue by fund, comparing the current year FY '19 budget to the tentative budget for FY '20. Through this comparison, we see an overall revenue increase of just over $9 million or 3.2%. When breaking down the revenue by major source, you can see that the vast majority of the revenue increase is coming from local sources, both property taxes and an increase in the amount of estimated investment income earnings. Total revenue is projected at 291.1 million for the upcoming year. Moving on to expenditures. This pie chart is displaying the all-fund summary of projected district expenses. Pieces of the pie are the expense objects as defined by the State Board of Education. The largest by far is employee salaries and benefits that make up over 3/4 of all district expenditures. This table summarizes the total tentative expenditures by fund as compared to the current year's budget and shows the dollar and percentage difference for each. The overall total change is 7.8 million or 2.85% more than the current year's budget. When breaking the expenditures down by major expense objects, you can see salaries and benefits are planned to increase by 1.75% over the current budget. This incorporates known collective bargaining terms, as well as all known and projected changes to staffing plans. It is important to note that when you're looking at the detailed budget that breaks salaries and benefits apart, you'll notice previously budgeted benefit dollars now being budgeted as salaries. This will bring in line our payroll practice that went into place this current year that recategorizes employer-paid TRS contribution as a salary item instead of a benefit. The next three items, professional services, supplies and utilities, and capital outlay are the result of previously mentioned budget initiatives, as well as reallocation of line items by the many different budget managers throughout the district. The additional technology lease payments are reflected in the debt service payments area of the budget. Tuition is anticipated to remain fairly stable with a slight increase budgeted for FY '20. Finally, to help aid in the five-year forecast, salaries and benefits have been budgeted very tightly. For transparency and to help offset any unforeseen items, a contingency has been added to the tentative budget in the education, operation and maintenance, transportation, and IMRF funds, which is equal to 1/2 of 1% of estimated salary and benefit costs. Overall, expenditures for the district funds are planned to be $283.4 million. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that presentation and I want to thank our superintendent and the whole team, including yourself and all the rest, who have worked so hard to put this budget together. And it definitely, just looking at the beginning of this budget book and we'll be really digging in with all our pencils, but looking at it, it clearly reflects the efforts that you have made to, in particular, look at efficiencies so that we're able to grow in the areas where students need growth, but we're also able to offset that cost. So thank you for that. I know that that's an overall effort led by our superintendent. Questions from the board?
So you're just receiving this, so obviously you're going to need some time to get into it. This is our typical process. I encourage you to take the budget book, begin to highlight and make notes that you may have. You may send them to me ahead of time so that Mike can be prepared for next week. But we would encourage the depth of the dialogue to begin at our next meeting.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments for tonight? Okay, then we'll go on to our next presentation. Number, item number 1702, Establishing Hourly Rates of Pay.
Annually, administration reviews hourly rates of pay for a number of positions throughout the school district. Our recommendations for you are here. There's a lot of changes recommended this year. Typically, we may have one or two recommendations. These recommendations are really the beginning of our process to meet our obligation under the increased minimum wage law. So we've provided for you for the first time kind of a tentative roadmap. Don't take that as the recommendation for the out-years, just kind of more of a roadmap on how we may get to that point to ensure that we are maintaining compliance with our requirements under the new law. There's a memorandum from our Chief Human Resources Officer, Carol Hetman, provided for you in board docs that we believe lays some things out. Note that these will be reviewed annually, each category, not only to ensure that it's the appropriate amount, but that it is also competitive with neighboring and benchmarking districts and that we're able to fill these positions. We are, we have seen a little bit of an increase in vacancy of some of our substitute positions, thus partially some of the recommendation of the increase there. But a rationale is provided in board docs. Carol, I don't know if you have any other comments at this time, but we'll be happy to respond to any questions that you do have. Be asking for action at the May 21st meeting.
Questions from the board? Okay, I know there were some questions that were sent ahead and we've got those answers there. And if additional questions are out, are, come to your minds, please send those ahead to Dan and we'll be looking for action in two weeks. Okay, moving on to item 17.03, 2019-2020 Board Meeting Schedule.
With the current board now seated, one of your requirements is to set a meeting schedule for next year. So we have a tentative roadmap there. I know there's already got to be at least one change on the July 22nd. We're looking at July 15th. Just, I'll note a couple other things in there as well. September happens to be one of those, what we call a five Monday month. We typically meet on the first and the third Monday, but we've always had to move the first meeting of the month to the Tuesday after Labor Day. So our recommendation is rather than coming in off of a three-day holiday, we take advantage of that five weekend month and go on the 9th and the 23rd. October follows its normal suit. November, during board prep, we talked about, I have a conflict serving on a national board, so I would not, I will not be in district. Neither will Mrs. Patton, who will be supporting me in that on November 4th. So we have options there, whether I can call in and participate, the board meets. My recommendation is we just have the one meeting. December follows its normal schedule. January also is on the first and the third. Note that the 6th will be coming off of the winter vacation. But if we switch, if we move that to the 2nd and 4th, we'll have back-to-back meetings at the end of January and beginning of February. So we'll just prepare, be prepared before the winter vacation. February is its normal. Well, also I'll note in January, the second meeting of the month follows the King Holiday. February, we have a president's day on the 3rd Monday, so that's off of its normal rotation. And then March is normal. April, just note that the first meeting will come off of the spring break. And then May is what has become our new typical with a projected graduation on the 18th. And June also normal. So we know we have a change on July. This is for your review, any other feedback, and we'll bring back for action and then posting at the May 21st meeting.
Okay, so thank you for that review and we'd be looking at this calendar with July 22nd changed to July 15th. But he, Dan highlighted several different things, several Tuesday meetings and a couple that fall out of the norm. Questions from the board? Donna?
So we are shifting the July back to July 15th. I guess the only other thing I want to discuss was the November change, just to see how, what the other board members think and, because that's different. We usually always have two meetings.
Let me share a little bit of background on the typical first meeting of November. Historically, it's been a fairly light agenda. The most prominent item on the agenda has been our assessment report from Dr. Knowlton. However, we're recommending that we actually present that at the October 21st meeting next year, assuming we have the data and information available to us from the state, which I know that face that I just saw, Dr. Knowlton. But so, other than that, the agenda is typically fairly light. We tend not to conduct business, so to speak, during the first meeting of the month anyways. So it's, you know, kind of really the board's discretion on that. I would assume that we would arrange for some sort of educational programming or information to the board, not something that would require action.
Thoughts? I would defer to your recommendation, just given, knowing what is, you know, you knew knowing what business needs to go through and I, there's always the opportunity, I guess. If we, if we needed it, we could add.
Right, that's, this doesn't limit you, obviously, as you know, to meetings. We scheduled one for June 4th now for a board self-review for this year. We have scheduled other meetings for specific purposes as needed. That is something we can kind of lay out the meeting schedule for now. My recommendation would be prefer to add a meeting rather than to cancel a meeting. So my recommendation right now would be to go with this. But obviously, keep eyes and ears open regarding the needs of the business of the district and schedule a meeting as necessary as we get closer to that date.
Okay. So if you have additional thoughts on that, let us know. Or if there's conflicts that come up when you're looking at some of these ones that we've proposed changing, for example, the September, let us know about that. And as we had mentioned, there were definitely conflicts with regard to July 22nd and we are changing that back to July 15th. Okay, all right, and we'll be looking for action on that on May 21st. Okay, moving on to item 18, Discussion with Action. Item 1801, Establish Date for Public Hearing and Direct Tentative Budget to be Put on Public Display.
Yes, Mr. Francis indicated earlier, you are required to adopt a budget by September 30th. You're also then required at least one public hearing after the tentative budget is made available to the public. So we have a resolution here for your approval, which will set the public hearing as June 17th and also to direct the administration to make the tentative budget available to the public.
Questions or comments from the board? Okay, so this will establish our date for our public hearing and our tentative budget will be directed to be put on public display. Can I have a motion? A motion is second or heard. Please call the roll, Mrs. Patton. Kush?
Aye.
Liang? Yang Ror? Kuzmetsky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Wan Ki? Gerke. The motion passes. Okay, moving on to item 19, New Business. No new business. Item 20, Old Business. Old Business. Item 21, Upcoming Events.
I will call attention to, I'll begin by saying, I am probably the only person thrilled with the amount of rain that we're getting lately because it's getting its out of its system so that on Monday, May 20th, we can conduct our two high school commencement exercises at both Naperville Central and Naperville North High School. As noted, a couple of times, the next board meeting is May 21st. Last day of classes, pending no additional emergency days, will be May 31st, 2019.
Right, great. Thank you for that review of the schedule and we'll also all be hoping for no rain. Any other comments on the schedule? Okay, moving on to item 22, Adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move?
A motion is second or heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.